Good evening. I'd like to call the council meeting Monday, December 19, 2022, to order. If I can have our city clerk, please call the role.
Mayor Flores.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Tharp.
Present.
And Councilmember Noble is absent. Councilmember Dugo.
Here.
And Councilmember Diaz.
Here.
Councilmember Busque.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
A rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Moving on to agenda approval. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion. Second.
All right. I have a motion made by Councilmember Dugo, second by Councilmember Diaz. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. That motion carries four zero. All right. Comments from the public for agenda items only. Anyone wishing to speak on any agenda item, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. All right. Seeing no one, moving on to special business. Tonight, we have a presentation for the 2022 city photo contest winner. I'm going to invite our local State Farm agent, Blanca McCray, to come up to the podium, and also our Director of Community and Recreation Services, Michelle Thompson.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, members of the audience, and our winners. Thank you for being here. For the record, Michelle Thompson, Director of Community and Recreation Services. And I am here with our long-term photo contest sponsor, Blanca McCray. She's the owner of State Farm in Lake Worth Road. And since 2018, we've been doing this contest, and Blanca has been generous enough to really, every year, step forward and do the awards for our first, second, and third place winners. And every year, our contest is growing a little bit. This year, we had 74 submittals. Out of the 74 submittals, 27 of them were viable for enlargement and reproduction, basically. So I'd also want to thank this year's committee members. We have nine committee members from different departments. Those committee members are kind of elected for service through the department directors. And we had Castori Rodriguez from the City Clerk's Office, Sheriff Stewart from Human Resources, Corinne Dawes from Finance, Nicole King from Community and Recreation Services, Crystal Byovian from Fire Rescue, Monica Powery from Purchasing, Candy Tejada from Development and Neighborhood Services, Eileen Hernandez from Public Works, Ben Dexter from Youth Programs, and of course, Blanca was our tiebreaker, if we had a tiebreaker. So as judge and sponsor. We'd also like to thank one of my employees, Loris Baez, who goes through all of the submittals to make sure that they reach the pixels and they reach the criteria for judging. It takes a tremendous amount of time, so we appreciate her expertise in that. And I'm going to turn it over to Blanca so she can award and announce their winners.
Michelle, thank you so much for everything that you do and for always finding a way to involve the small business community. I really appreciate you. Okay, so we'll start first with our third place winner. I know that she's not here, but I'd like to announce her for the record. Our third place winner was Ashley Barancelli with her water lily. Yay. All right, and then we'll have a drum roll. So our second place winner is Amy Di Martino with her mom and baby duck picture.
Aww.
Congratulations. Beautiful.
They've been in my wake for a year, and I've been watching them grow, so now they're immortal.
And if you haven't seen the previous years around town, it's beautiful to see them on the junction boxes throughout the community. Okay, and our first place winner is Douglas Ruby with his beautiful dragonfly.
Thank you so much. That was awesome. All right. Moving on to our consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All right. I have a motion made by Councilmember Diaz, second by Deputy Mayor Tharp. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion carries four zero. All right. Moving on to our regular agenda. We have a public hearing for ordinance 2022-35's first reading. If I can have our city clerk, please call the, read the ordinance by title.
Ordinance 2022-35, first reading, amending Chapter 16, Article 3, District Regulations, Division 11, Commercial Intensive, Section 16-49930, to allow for outside car detailing at standalone car washes within the commercial intensive zoning district, providing for repellent conflicting ordinances, severability, inclusion in code, and an effective date.
Thank you. And we have our zoning administrator, Karen Gerny Young, presenting.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. If it's okay with the council, there are two petitions on the same topic, although one's a zoning change and one's a zoning text amendment. We'd like to group them together in one presentation, but the titles would have to be read separately and a separate vote on each one. With that, one of them is a quasi judicial hearing, so Mayor, if it's okay, I'll do the language on the, for the quasi judicial hearing with your permission.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir. Tonight, we're holding a quasi judicial hearing on the following case, ZTA 22-17 and ZC 2201 Mint Echo. This means that the commission is required by law to base its decision on the evidence contained in the record of this proceeding, which consists of the testimony at hearing, the materials which are in the official city file on this application, and any documents presented during this hearing. The city council is also required by law to allow cross-examination of any witnesses who testified tonight. Cross-examination may occur after the staff, the applicant, and other participants have made their presentations and will be permitted in the order of the witnesses' appearance. It is necessary that anyone who testifies at the hearing remain until the conclusion of the hearing in order to be able to respond to any questions. All who intend to offer testimony this evening on any of the cases should be sworn in.
Should we do the swearing in at this item or at the next item?
We can do it now. We can do it now. I'm doing them kind of together, but Kristi, you tell me how you'd like to get it done.
Mayor, I think for purposes, we're doing them both sort of as quasi judicial. The first one is just a text amendment, which is legislative. It's not quasi judicial. But the zoning change is quasi judicial, and since they're tied to the same property, we're just going to do it together for sake of making the presentations easier. So what I would recommend is we go ahead and swear folks in for both items. And then, for purposes of approval, we'd read the title to the zoning change and then proceed with that as a separate vote.
Excellent. Thank you.
Those who will be providing testimony, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you affirm that the testimony you are about to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? And thank you. May be seated.
Thank you, Mayor. As this being quasi judicial, the petitioner is the presenter first. So with that, I will ask that the petitioner's representative come up to the dais, and I am placing their presentation right now.
Thank you, Karen. For the record, Josh Nichols with Schmidt Nichols, representing the applicant. So this evening, before we get started, I'm going to turn it over to the co-founder of Mint Echo to kind of go over what Mint Echo is, what their operation is about, because I think it is very relevant to these two requests. So with that, I'm going to turn it over real quick to Jeff Jervis, and then he'll pass it back to me in a couple minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Karen, let's do the slides. Thank you. So I'll be brief. I was chastised for not being brief enough at the last hearing, but I will be brief this time. I promise that. I founded the company with partner of mine in 2018 in order to change an industry. I believe the car wash industry generally is tremendously necessary. It's very underserved here in the county, and I believe that, for the most part, car wash operators didn't do a very good job. And so what you'll see tonight is just some representations of how we approach the business differently. The first thing, we're a relationship-focused organization with four key relationships. Our first relationship is with our customers. And as you can see on the pictures up top, this is our wash on Southern Boulevard and Olive. It starts with a beautiful site. Many car washes are not beautiful, and we pride ourselves on having beautiful buildings with a tremendous amount of landscaping. If you don't mind, go to the next slide, please. Thank you. Our lobbies, you know, continued representation of this, clean, free coffee, free bottle, free water bottle fillers, immaculate bathrooms. As a matter of fact, we often find Sheriff's Department and local police are frequenting our sites, not only because we provide them a free car washes, but also because it's an opportunity for them to use clean bathrooms, which candidly, I don't think are readily available in many of the districts. Next slide, please. Again, more pictures of what we do. The picture on the top right, that's our outdoor lobby. You know, we pride ourselves on where we can, using landscaping, using trees instead of shades, using grass, using coral stone pavers, beautiful pots and flowers, again, trying to do it differently. Next slide, please. Our second key relationship is the community, and you can see up on the slide some charities that we support locally. First thing we do when we operate a wash is we draw a three-mile circle around the wash, and we reach out to every single educational institution, whether it be public or private, every religious organization, as well as every charitable organization inside that three-mile circle. And we actively solicit to support them with donations. So far to date, we've given $150,000 to charities around our three washes that are operating right now. You'll also see the police seal up there for the Jupiter Police Department and the Palm Beach and the Sheriff's Office. And those are up there because we also offer free car washes to any police, any first responders. We believe that it's the least we can do in giving back to the community, not only our charitable offerings, but also supporting those that put themselves at risk for us. In addition, every, you can go to the next slide, please. Every wash, we adopt a park. This is Ocean Reef Park. We've adopted it for our Jupiter location. We haven't designated a park yet, and we look for some advice on what park to adopt in association with our wash on Lake Worth Road. But this is a park that we clean up at least six times. We try and do it at least six times a year. It's our local staff from our local wash, in addition to our corporate staff, going out and cleaning these parks up. We want to make sure that our employees, certainly the ones that are in these washes, are aware and are participating in our community activities. Next slide, please. We've won some awards. On the left, you'll see we've won an award, the Patriot Award, as well as another award from the Department of Defense for our support of the Garden Reserve. We pride ourselves on attempting to hire as many garden reservists as we can, as well as we've crafted our employee manual to be very lenient and liberal with respect to leave, payment, if they're ever called to duty, as well as our support of their families. And then also, we've won the, in 2022, we won the best car wash in Palm Beach County from the Palm Beach Post. We're also up for that same award this year, along with a new award, which is the Green Business of the Year. Next slide, please. Our third pillar relationship here is with the environment. Just so you know, the most friendly, eco-friendly thing that a car wash does, a professional car washes exists. It takes 140 gallons to wash a car in your driveway, and you use whatever chemistry's under your sink. And that water goes right into our storm drains, and as we know, our storm drains go right into our canals, into our waterways. Every drop of water that we use in our tunnel is captured. It is recycled on an eight-tank system and then reused. So we end up using about 70 gallons of water in total, of which about 40 of those are recycled. Our commitment goes well beyond that. I'll tell you, there's a long list up there. Most recently, we've added bamboo toilet paper as a better product to use, more eco-friendly. And so we do that in everywhere. All of our coffee pods are reusable, and we take our commitment to the environment very seriously. Next slide, please. Again, what's different about us? What are we, why are we asking for the text amendment? What's different about us is what you see up on the screen right there. Again, this is our wash on Southern Boulevard, where we actually, we will do interiors and detail services for customers. We offer free vacuums, like most modern car washes do. We have a tunnel like most modern car washes. But we also offer the ability to, for a fee, to do the interior. You can come sit in our lobby, enjoy our free coffee, get a detail, same thing. And we believe those services are a big differentiator in the product mix that we have. Next slide, please. Again, more pictures of our lobby. Those, again, necessary because most car washes today won't have a lobby because they're not having their customers get out of the car. Obviously, we need those services, we need those facilities available. Next slide, please. Again, our washes are different. We're staffed generally with about 20 people. In the high season, we can get up to about 20 people onsite at any one time. We greet personally. We hand dry cars when they come out of the tunnel. We also have quality control that delivers your car at the end. Next slide, please. And then our last relationship is with our employees. And each one of our car washes has a payroll of over $1 million. We start with line staff. Our line staff, with tips included, make $15 to $30 an hour, which is on the high end of the range for anybody who's hourly employees at a car wash. If you're good at that, we teach English classes. We offer free English classes to our employees. And if you can learn English and you're good at your job, it offers you, it opens up the opportunity to become a customer service representative where you're making $25 to $35 an hour, which equates to about $50,000 to $60,000 a year. If you're good at that, you can become an assistant manager, and if you're good assistant manager, you can have a manager, and those salaries are $50,000 to $75,000 for an assistant manager and $75,000 to $125,000 for a manager. As a matter of fact, our manager at our wash in West Palm started as a line staff member, worked his way up through our customer service staff, became an assistant manager, and is now a full-fledged manager, making this year, he will make $125,000. Next slide, please. And that is my entire presentation. I just wanted to focus on our differences and let you know why the text amendment was necessary, because of those detailing and interior services that we do, that we do in addition to what you'll see at most car washes. So I'll turn it back to Josh.
So again, Josh Nichols, for the record. So I'm going to go over the fun stuff. So we have the two formal requests, as you know, and again, we're combining Agenda Item 5 and Agenda Item 6 for, I guess, to conserve time here. So anyways, the first one is the zoning text amendment. And basically, the gist of that is to allow the outdoor detailing and waxing for standalone car washes. The second request is for the rezoning. Next slide, please. So again, for the zoning text amendment, as you know, ordinance 2022-07, which was approved by the commission, allowed standalone car washes as special exceptions. So we're utilizing that piece of that. And then also, the request that came in specific to that special exception was for an express wash, so it didn't have the exterior detailing, so that was excluded from that text. So we're basically asking to add that in. If you could go to the next slide, please. So I won't go through each line of this, but the main impetus was this, was to add the exterior detailing and waxing. And what we did to mitigate that was to have a six-foot wall that was required for screening, as well as buffering on either side of the wall. So that way, there's no, you know, no impacts to the adjacent property owners. Next slide. And again, we work closely with staff to develop that language, and staff is in agreement with what we've come up with. So again, there's three findings of fact for a zoning text amendment. The first was the reason and need, and again, the, we're a hybrid model, right? So we have the express side, but we also have the full detail. So we want to be able to provide that additional service through this amendment. Present text is invalid or inappropriate, so I wouldn't say that it's either. I think that it just limits you to one style, where we want to have two different varieties to be able to offer in the town. Because again, there's other provisions within that special exception criteria that limit the number of car washes based on a separation. So you have a 3,000-foot separation. So that avoids that inundation of the use, but we want to make sure the use that we do have will be, will have that flexibility, and then compliance with the comprehensive plan. So what we've proposed and where the location of the car wash and how it operates is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan. And we'll go through some of those items. Next slide. Mitigation measures. So again, car washes are still limited, obviously, to the urban arterial roadways, which in this case is Lake Worth Road. Commercial intensive zone parcels are located along these arterials, and it is the only district in which the car wash would be allowed. All car washes must comply with the 15 supplemental standards. So again, with this modification to the code, we comply with all 15 standards. And again, in the CI district, which is your commercial intensive, it requires a six-foot wall along the residential joining properties, so we have included that. As well as if it didn't have residential, it would still require that six-foot wall for those types of uses. So you can go to the next slide. So again, this is just showing that separation requirement in the code is 3,000 feet. We're about 7,300 feet away from the nearest car wash that's actually on the agenda this evening. So hopefully, these are the two that are basically along Lake Worth Road corridor. Next slide. So then we get into Request 2. So this is the second item on the agenda that we have for Mint Echo. And this is the zoning change. So currently, all three parcels are general commercial, and we're asking for that change to commercial intensive to support the use. Next slide. What I think is interesting on this slide is that the comprehensive plan in the zoning code both provide for these spheres of activity centers. So these are hubs along major arterials, which extend about 1,300 feet from the intersections of two major roadways within the town. So we fall directly within one of those hubs. So this is, this is again, why the request makes sense from a comp plan and from the zoning text on the change from CG to CI. So this is where you, this is where you want those primary activity centers. This is where the code and the comp plan direct that type of intensive use. Next slide. So again, I won't go into all these, but this is just to point out, from the comprehensive plan as it relates to the zoning text change, that these are where the higher intensity uses are. They're located within the spheres of activity and oriented toward major highways and thoroughfares. And that's exactly where this parcel is. Next. So again, we want to turn, I'm sure everyone's been by this, the old La Grange site. This is what it looks like now. Next slide. This is what we're trying to turn it into. So we're really trying to make the site, make the site better, make it something you guys can be proud of, that the community can utilize as a service. I can go to the next slide. And I will say, Jeff and his team went personally to the community and have talked to several folks, and we were able to get two letters of support representing three parcels in the immediate vicinity of adding the property, so you can see those two letters. And I believe with that, be happy to answer any questions you may have. Appreciate the time.
All right. At this time, we're going to our, to Karen, right, to do our presentation?
Thank you, Mayor, council members. As stated, this is two petitions. So the first one is in regards to a zoning text amendment. The second is in regards to a zoning change. So again, to kind of give you an idea, it's actually three separate parcels. The top parcel is where the vacant restaurant is located, and the two parcels to the south are presently vacant. So you can see there's residential to the west, residential to the east, and a canal, and then residential to the south. And then obviously, you're right next door to the Dairy Queen. So this is what our zoning code would look like. Wanted to give you a good feel. So the pink is the CI, and the red is the CG. So it kind of gives you a feel. Lake Worth Road, without a doubt, is our commercial thoroughfare. Predominantly, if you would go further west, it's predominantly CI. So again, if the intention is to make it our major thoroughfare, you typically would want to have your CI as your type of, your type of activity allowed. The zoning text amendment is to allow a car detailing activity at a standalone car wash, okay? So standalone, we originally had our code, which only allowed car washes next to gas stations. Then we did an amendment, which allowed them no longer needing to be near gas stations. And now the next quest, the next request is to allow the outdoor car detailing operations. So as we've seen the proposed language, again, to address the impacts with car detailing, because the activity is outside, the thought would be you would address the noise and the activity through a wall or a fence. So that would be what would be requested. There's some flexibility in there, and I'm going to kind of give you an example. You know, in this instance, next door is the Dairy Queen. Would we want someone to have to go all the way down to the street? They have to go over while they're waiting for their car to go visit the Dairy Queen. We may want to have a break in the wall that might allow somebody to go across, if that's in agreement with the adjacent property owner. So we did want to give a little bit of flexibility based upon the particular situation, but it is discretionary to the staff. So it's not the applicant who has the choice. It's the city that would have the choice. So again, as we talked about, there's really two basic ones for me. It's the need and the justification for the change. And the other one is the relationship of the proposed amendment to the objectives in our comprehensive plan and how that fits in. I mean, the need and the justification is clear. The way that Mint Echo operates would not be permitted under our existing code, because they have that car detailing operation. So that's why the amendment is necessary. Does it meet our comprehensive plan? Absolutely. As was indicated, that is typically our commercial area, where we have, of course, we typically would, based upon what you saw tonight, we feel there might, there's a market demand for this type of service. We also feel that it would give some economic opportunities, particularly the costs that are being proposed or the salaries that are being proposed by this particular applicant. Again, this is not specific. The zoning text amendment is across the board, right? It's not just for Mint Echo's parcel. This one would allow, if a standalone car wash meets all the criteria, then they would be able to also have the car detailing in their location as well. However, it is a special exception still. So it's not permitted as of right. They would still have to come to the city council to allow them to have the standalone car wash. You would have the option, then, to be able to say car detailing or whatever else you felt may not be appropriate, okay? Staff has determined that the petition meets the criteria for approval of the zoning text amendment. The next one is the zoning change from commercial general to commercial intensive. Again, this is a purpose to allow a standalone car wash at this specific site, okay? Because right now, car washes are not permitted in a commercial general zoning district. They're only allowed in commercial intensive. So the criteria we need to take a look at is, we need to look at, is it contrary to land use? Is it existing land use pattern? Does it create an isolated district? Does it, are the districts geologically drawn? And staff went through this whole analysis. The Development Review Committee all reviewed it. And we felt that all the conditions that were met were appropriate for this particular zoning change. So for example, it's not contrary to the city's land use map. It's consistent with the existing land use pattern, where we're converting these parcels to CI on Lake Worth Road. Lake Worth Road is predominantly CI. It won't overtax or increase the public facilities, keeping in mind that it was already commercial. So it's not like we're going from a vacant parcel to a commercial parcel. It was already developed. It was just vacant for a time period. So realistically, the services should have already been taken into consideration when it was first zoned into commercial general. It will not create a special privilege. There is a substantial need for this type of car wash, and we feel, again, it doesn't influence the area. It was already deemed to be commercial. So staff has also determined that this petition meets the criteria for the approval of a zoning change. The Development Review Committee met on September 9th. No objections were received regarding the proposal for either of the petitions. The Planning Zoning Board of Adjustments did review, and they recommended unanimously approval 4-0 as presented by staff. Staff is recommending approval of ZC 2201 through ordinance 2022-36 and ZTA 22-17 through ordinance 2022-35. This is first reading, so it is not adoption. It's just first reading. So staff is here to answer any questions. We ask that everything in our file be included as part of the public record. I will let you know, during the Planning Zoning Board of Appeal, there were some residents who did show up regarding this petition. Two items specifically were mentioned during it. Noise was one, and flooding was the second one. So I did want to let you know, flooding, really, again, the individual parcel is required to keep its own water on its own site. So really, from a perspective, this wouldn't add to the, necessarily to the flooding. The noise, obviously, we're trying to address that with the screening of the wall and the fencing. But those were the ones that individuals did come in and wanted you to be aware. There were some information. I did ask the applicant to meet with them after. Certainly, you can ask what transpired between them. I think you can see they did go to some of the owners and got the letter of, you know, of no objection from some of the homeowners. So I think they did go out in good earnest to try to address any concerns people would have. With that, staff's here to answer any questions, as well as the applicant.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions from the council, Deputy Mayor Tharp?
First question, I think, more so for the applicant. I saw two letters of, from neighbor, you know, residential neighborhood who were approving and supporting, but I count seven, 10, 15 homes within, with on the property boundary alone, maybe even, you know, closer to 19. So two of 19 is, seems a little skewed. So I didn't know if you also received any letters of objection or from the resident comments. or from the resident, resident comments is the first concern. I've got tons of questions on site plan when we get to that point, so.
I'll take the question. So with respect to the, the residents, they were all notified. And what we did was two residents showed up and expressed concern that was noted. One was about noise. The other was, well, the other one was about really the wall and the location of our wall and access to the site. We went out and met, we went to the community. I went to, I went to the community on three separate occasions since the, the planning and zoning board meeting. Met with not only those two residents who had expressed concerns. I only solicited letters from those two residents who had expressed concerns. I do believe I could go out and get more letters. I did want to make sure that we addressed their concerns, and we addressed their concerns, you know, with, you know, again, with explaining the situation to them, making some small changes to the site plan to accommodate their needs. And again, both of the residents that showed up did, in fact, sign letters of support, not just no objection, but letters of support for the project. I made myself available to the community, again, going out a few times. Couple other neighbors came up, had conversations. I didn't follow up with them beyond that. But I'm, you know, again, I, to the extent any additional objections came up, again, we are a community focused organization, so we would address those as they came up. But again, to your point about the 15-plus residents, they all did receive, they all did receive the notices, I believe.
Josh, within 500 feet?
So more than that received notices. And we just dealt with the objections that came up and made ourselves available in the community and did speak to many neighbors. As a matter of fact, spoke to two other neighbors that are, you know, right on the property line. And again, I, not to put the cart before the horse here, but I do believe I could get letters of support from more, should that be necessary.
No, I don't think it's necessary. It was just, I wanted to make sure that, besides the two letters, that, that you didn't receive objections from any other residents.
No objections, no, no, sir.
Perfect, thank you.
Councilmember Diaz?
A couple questions I have. The first is, and I probably already know this answer, but I'm, I'm assuming that the residents were notified about tonight's hearing.
Absolutely. Not only did we post it on our website and in the paper, but we also sent letters out.
Okay. What are the business hours that are proposed for the car wash?
On weekdays, 7 to 9. And then on weekends, Saturday, we go 8 to 6, and Sunday, 9 to 5.
Okay. And then the other one is, and if I missed how it's laid out, I do apologize. But seeing the parcels, where in this vicinity would the detailing portion be located on the parcel?
Can you see if I use this?
Sure.
So our operation stops about here. So this is, right, so this remains vacant, right? Our operation goes here, and the free vacuums are over here, right? And then our activities for detailing occur right here. And I will say that the detailing business is only open 9 to 5.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions from the council? All right. We are reverting back to item five, which is a public hearing. At this point in time, I'd like to open public hearing for ordinance 2022-35, first reading. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the ordinance, please come forward. State your name and address for the record. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition of the ordinance, please come forward. State your name and address for the record. Public hearing is now closed. Once again, we are talking about the, the text amendment, correct? On, on item 2235?
Correct.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve ordinance number 2022-35 on first reading.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Busque, second by Councilmember Dugo. All in favor?
Aye.
And that motion carries for zero. Now, we are moving on to our next item, which is a quasi-judicial public hearing for ordinance 2022-36, first reading. If I can have our city clerk, please read the ordinance by title.
Ordinance 2022-36, first reading approving a zoning change and official zoning map amendment of three parcels of land totaling approximately 3.62 acres located on the south side of Lake Worth Road, approximately 200 feet west of Empire Way at 4840 Lake Worth Road from a City of Green Acres designation of commercial general to a City of Green Acres designation of commercial intensive as requested by the petitioner Smiths and Nichols, agent for the owner Mint Eco Car Wash, providing for changes to the official zoning map repellent conflicting ordinances, severability, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. All right. At this point in time, I'd like to ask our council to disclose any ex parte communication. We'll start to my right, Deputy Mayor Tharp.
None.
For myself, I actually had a presentation overview with the business owner and some of his staff. Councilmember Dugo?
None.
Councilmember Diaz? Councilmember Busque?
None.
All right. So now we've had both of the presentations. Our staff has also presented. So are there any further questions from the council regarding the proposal and the application? Seeing none, all right. Like to open public hearing for quasi-judicial hearing, public hearing for ordinance 2022-36, first reading. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the ordinance, please come forward. State your name and address for the record. Seeing no one. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition of the ordinance, please come forward. State your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Olga Sierra. I live in 5794 South 38th Street, Green Acres, Florida. The only thing I have is a question. What about the traffic? Lake Worth is too hectic. Now, if we do a car wash, how are we going to do with the traffic? That's only my curiosity and my question.
Karen, we, I'm assuming we did a traffic study in this particular?
That is correct. It has been reviewed by the traffic engineer. It's also been reviewed by Florida Department of Transportation because Lake Worth Road is their road. In both instances, we didn't receive anything that indicated it was in violation of any ordinance or regulations that were out there.
Okay, thank you. All right. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor or in opposition of the ordinance? Seeing no one. Public hearing is now closed. All right. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve ordinance 2022-36.
Second.
All right. I have a motion made by Councilmember Dugo, second by Deputy Mayor Tharp. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. That motion carries for zero. All right. Moving on to item seven, quasi-judicial public hearing for resolution 2022-35. If I can have our city clerk, please read the ordinance by title.
Resolution 2022-35, approving the petition for a special exception to allow a standalone car wash in a commercial intensive zoning district located at 6200 Lake Worth Road as requested by the petitioner, Dwayne Dickerson, agent for the contract purchase of Vibe Investments, providing for repellent conflict and resolutions, and providing for an effective date.
All right. This is also a quasi-judicial hearing. Did everybody get sworn in the, the first time? Anybody else needing to get sworn in?
No, it's different, different group.
Right, but I thought we did the oath at once, no? All right, let's see the, if we can do the oath.
Do you affirm that the testimony you're about to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. You may be seated.
All right. So we did the oath. We did the, we read the ordinance, the resolution. All right. If I can have our council disclose ex parte communication, Deputy Mayor Tharp?
None.
None for myself. Councilmember Dugo?
None.
Councilmember Diaz? Councilmember Busque?
None.
All right. At this point in time, I'd like to ask the applicant to come to the podium. State your name and address for the record and begin your presentation, please.
Good evening, Dwayne Dickerson, on behalf of the applicant, attorney of the law firm, Dana Miskin-Bachman, offices at 14 Southeast 4th Street in Boca Raton, Florida. Thank you. Next slide, please. So the subject site is on the south side of Lake Worth Road, just east of Jog Road, as you can see in the red box on the screen. Next slide, please. This is a zoom, and the site is just under an acre and a half. It's currently zoned, commercial intensive, and it has commercial future land use. The existing use is a vacant restaurant, and we're proposing a standalone automated car wash facility. You can also see the adjacent uses there. The Sonic is just to our west, and the Green Acres Bowling Alley is just to our east. Next slide, please. The vacant restaurant was the Steak and Shake. I'm sure you all pass it quite a bit. The site is definitely in need of some TLC, so we're looking forward to demolishing this building, as you see, and, and building the new car wash facility. We don't own the site yet. We have it under contract, but we did work with your city to board it up to make sure that it's safe. So all the boarding up is taking place at our, with our effort. But we're really looking forward to demolishing that building and moving forward with the development. Next slide, please. As you may recall, I was before you in May of this year requesting text amendment approval to allow for the standalone car wash. As, as your staff stated, you used to have a requirement that it was tied to a gas station. And this commission did, or our council, rather, did approve that change. So that allowed us to move forward with our next application, which is, next slide, please. Thank you. Which is our special exception and site plan approval to allow for the car wash facility, which is just shy of 4,000 square feet. And that's the request this evening. Next slide, please. So this is our site plan, just to give you orientation. The top of the screen is north, and to the left is west, to the right is east, and on the bottom is, is the south. We are utilizing the existing access road that's just to the west of the site. So we are not asking for any additional curb cuts or access openings onto Lake Worth Road. We are using the existing access point, which was approved by Florida Department of Transportation because they do have jurisdiction over Lake Worth Road. That was also approved by the county, Palm Beach County, as well as the City of Green Acres. So the way the site functions is you enter off of the existing access road, and then you enter into the site to the east. And then you make that right. And you can see the cars show the stacking. So that's approximately 22 cars of stack on the site with zero conflicts adjacent, with that adjacent access road and, and nowhere near Lake Worth Road. So as you can imagine, the goal is to make sure that your site operates fully within the confines of our parcel and no spillage off of our parcel onto adjacent rights of way or adjacent properties. That 22-car stack is, is very conservative. As you can see, we have more room on our site, but that just shows that there's more than sufficient stacking. There are multiple pay stations, so to move efficiently and make sure the cars move through efficiently. And as we have a surplus of parking, your code requires six parking spaces. We have 23 provided. So everything on this site is in excess with respect to design to make sure that it functions properly. So then, once you enter on the south side of the building, you then exit on the north side, and then you make that left. And then you can utilize our parking, our vacuum spaces, which are, you see those parking spaces. Those are all free vacuums. So you can exit if you're not going to vacuum. And if you do vacuum, you go further south, and then you exit back onto Lake Worth Road. Next slide, please. This is our landscape plan, so consistent with the text amendment. The staff wanted to make sure that the adjacent properties are thoroughly screened and protected. And we are doing that with this plan. So you'll see on our south side and our east side, which are the closest sides to the residential community, there will be a six-foot-high masonry solid wall, as well as on the north side, which is where you would exit the car wash. We are proposing a green screen there so that, that area exiting the car wash in the tunnel will be screened from view from Lake Worth Road. I'm not a landscape architect, but when I work with our landscape architects, I say I want to see a lot of circles on the plan because circles mean trees and landscape cover and material. So you can see there's significant landscaping in circles throughout this site. It's more than exceeds your code requirements with respect to landscaping, trees, ground cover, hedges, and everything else, in addition to the green screen and the six-foot-high masonry wall. Next slide, please. This is a copy of our floor plan. So to orient you, north is to the left now, and south to the right. East is on top and, and west on the bottom. So you can see the tunnel on the top side where the vehicles enter. And then on that, on that west side or the bottom side, there's a office to the right. In the middle is an equipment room, and to the left is a supply room. So just functional spaces for the use of the facility. We do have between one to two employees onsite at all times during operating hours to make sure that if anything happens, there's an issue with the pay station or anything mechanical issues, there's somebody onsite at all times to make sure that that's resolved immediately. Next slide, please. These are our elevations. So the top elevation is the west elevation. In the middle on the left is the north elevation. That's the elevation from Lake Worth Road. But remember, that elevation is screened with a green wall. And then on the right in the middle is our south elevation. And then on the bottom would be our east elevation. Next slide, please. Thank you. So just to give you a little bit of background about the principles behind the Pinkbird Car Wash franchise. They are local. They multi-generational family in Palm Beach County. They are the owners and the operators, so they will be here. Their headquarters is in Palm Beach County, in West Palm Beach. And all of their profits and charitable efforts remain in the local community. So as you can imagine, having owners and operators that are local to this community gives them a huge sense of pride in making sure that this is done the right way and that it continues to operate the right way once it's built. They make sure that they provide significant value to this community with competitive pricing, a very strong commitment to quality. The convenience is key in this world. The, the facility usually operates with an efficiency of three to five minutes through the car wash cycle and exit into then the self, self-service vacuums. Very family-friendly, making sure that the, the site is safe and a welcoming atmosphere to all customers. Lighting and, and those types of design criteria, they call it SEPTED, which, working with your police department, making sure you're designing the site in a way that is, is very safe and, and friendly for all, for all customers. And then very community-oriented. They, they work with a group of Edenova, which more than 50% of their employees are former foster care and other homeless youth. So they want to make sure that we're employing folks that really need an opportunity and that come from this community. Next slide, please. They employ all the modern technology to make sure that everything's efficient, it's affordable, and that they have minimal to no impacts on the environment. The, I didn't share notes with the previous applicant, Josh. He's right. His number is exactly what the industry says, that the typical home wash uses about 140 gallons, right, per vehicle. And with our facility, that number is reduced to about 30 gallons per vehicle. So our water reclamation system allows for a reduction of water consumption of about 75% versus a, a home wash, a traditional wash. And then pursuant to your code of ordinances, we are required to recapture all of our water and reuse it, which we do. So we make sure that we're reducing the need for fresh water. And of course, we, we make sure that we use chemicals that are non-acidic, phosphate-free, phosphate-free, rather, and biodegradable. So all the latest technology is, is being implemented in this design. Next slide, please. Thank you. So as you know, this special exception is here this evening. Staff is recommending approval of this special exception. And we did go before your planning and zoning board earlier this month, and they are unanimously recommending approval as well. Next slide. And same with the site plan. Staff is, is fully recommending approval. And your planning and zoning board unanimously recommended approval as well. Next slide, please. So with that, I just want to, once again, state our excitement with this project. This is the last phase. I'm sure staff will state, but just for the record, I know there may, there was, I believe, just a typo in the backup materials that said that we had to go to a final reading. This is the final approval because this is a resolution. So we only need one hearing before the city council. So we have also had significant outreach to the residential community adjacent to us, Seminole Palms, significant conversations and meetings and so forth. Just making sure that all of the buffers and all of the landscaping and all of the design elements are, are done in a way to reduce or eliminate any impacts to our adjacent community. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I think staff is going to present as well.
Thank you. All right. So now we're moving on to our zoning administrator, Karen Garner Young, to do her presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As stated, this is hand in hand, so they need to do a special exception first because car washes are not as permitted as of right. So we do the special exception and the, and the site plan. Unlike the previous one, you'll be seeing theirs later. So this is exactly right, two resolutions. If you approve it tonight, they're, they've been deemed approved. No further review needs to be done. And it is site plan approval for 6,200 Lake Worth Road. So this is site-specific. Both of these, it's a special exception for 6,200 Lake Worth Road and it's a site plan for 6,200 Lake Worth Road. So again, to kind of give you where the site is, I know you've already seen it. Green Acres Bowl on one side, Lazy Boy was the original. The Montessori School is there. I will tell you that during the presentation at the Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals, that some individuals from the Montessori School did show up. Their concern was the traffic, since they have a joint or shared access ingress and egress. Again, let you know what went through the traffic engineers. They don't pretend to be one, but it went through their review and they determined that it did meet whatever criteria was necessary to allow this particular use, keeping in mind that we're not changing the zoning district and it was already commercial in nature. So again, keep in mind, it wasn't a vacant parcel, but it does have, um, you know, it does change the use a little bit. So we looked at the ingress egress, F dot, and as well as the city's traffic engineer approved it. It does have the enhanced screening and buffering. Again, the intention was we didn't want the opening, the, the car wash opening to be what you see as you drive by on Lake Worth Road. So as we're talking about enhanced landscaping, it does do that. It does meet the yard, uh, open space requirements. It does have the refuge service area. Utilities will not be affected. Off-street parking, loading, it does meet. The use won't be nuisance factor. Again, it's, or remains commercial. The site exterior lighting, it meets. It's consistent with the district regulations. It's compatible with adjoining properties and it's not at a scale with the needs of the neighborhood. We did determine it does meet the criteria for the special exception use. So staff is recommending approval for the special exception. We also have a site plan approval to construct a 3,945-square-foot car wash building. It includes 23 parking spaces, the landscape buffer, the six-foot masonry wall and access through the Lake, uh, Lake Worth Road with the joint access. The lot itself was grandfathered in. And we did make a point, and I do want you to be aware, we do have what we call a transitional zone. Transitional zone is actually kind of like an overlay between residential and commercial parcels. And the intention is, is to make the regulations a little stricter because you want less impact on your residential ne- neighborhood. So for example, the setback, instead of being in a CI, which might be 20 feet, it's 50 feet. So it gives it that type of, of distance. In this case, staff did take a look at it. And the reason why this is being brought up is that when the Steak and Shake was developed, the entrance area where Seminole Palms is now was part of the commercial. But when Seminole Palms came in, they needed ingress off of Lake Worth Road. So actually, that section got sold off. So that's what created the problem with the transitional zone. So I do want to point, we pointed it out. I want to make sure this council is aware that although the site plan does not meet the stated requirements of the transitional area regulations, we believe it does meet the intent. If you look, and I will go back again if you so desire, the, the ingress egress has no houses. There's a landscape buffer on the Seminole Palms end. That, I think the closest house is like 100, 161 feet away. So I think the intention was that the transitional zone is there, but, um, the commercial activity wouldn't have such impact on residential units because they're not located in that particular area. But we just wanted to make sure you were aware of that fact. The yard, the floor area height, parking landscaping, they meet all of those. And then the vacuuming itself also has some enhanced landscaping. I do want to point out, it's not something we didn't just look at it. We have conditions of approval. And I just want you to be aware, some of these are condition of approval. They got to pay fees into our public arts program, our tree dedication program and our impact fees. They're required to have all outside agency approvals. So South Florida Water Management District, Lake Worth Drainage District, Florida Department of Transportation, the Health Department, because we're changing. They're moving the building, okay? They're not using the same location. They're going to raise it and they're going further east. So there will be some changes to some of the piping. And then we do have the site improvements where we have underground utilities. The masonry wall, they're required to keep existing trees as much as possible. And I did want to make sure that we did put a bike rack in there because we're off of Lake Worth Road and it should have multimodal use. So we want to make sure that's in there. The petitioner has reviewed the conditions of approval and they had no objections. So staff also determined that this petition meets the criteria for the approval of a site plan. The Development Review Committee met on March 10th and 17th and any staff comments were incorporated into the staff report. We are recommending approval with the 27 conditions outlined in the September 27th, 2022 Development Review Committee Report and Recommendation. As far as the PZAB, they did meet on December 8th, 2022 and unanimously approved approval for zero as presented by staff, including all the conditions of approvals as outlined. Staff is here to answer any questions or comments you may have. We ask that everything in our file be included as part of the public record.
Are there any comments or questions from the council? Deputy Mayor Tharp.
First, thank you for the, the enhanced landscaping. I, I, I certainly appreciate it. The, the, the two noisiest pieces that I, that I foresee is going to be the exit of the gas station or the car wash and the, the, the outdoor vacuums. So the outdoor vacuums are going to be on the closest to Lake Worth Road. Is that correct?
Yes. Let me, let's get the, get the site plan so we have it. There you go. So the vacuums are going to be in this area. Can I see? Yeah. Let me know if I'm going wrong, but I, I believe this is the area that the vacuums will be located. So you have in the back area here, this is all landscaping. This is the retention area that they have. And again, the residential is probably the closest one is down in this area over here. Okay?
So what is the distance between the outdoor vacuums and the, the closest home? Approximately? Was it from?
We had 161 feet is what we had in the staff report.
Is that from the vacuums or from the car wash?
You know, I would probably say it's from the car wash. So maybe, I would say maybe 141, maybe if we have to. It's not as, it's not that, that close. And I think the house is actually over on this side. It's on the other side of the roadway.
And I guess last question for the applicant. Sounds like you did some public engagement as well. Same question as the other applicant. You always, everyone always reports the positives. Did you, did you receive any negative feedback from residents?
We did not. We did not receive anything negative. And I spoke to staff as late as this morning and they had not received anything negative either. And if I may, I did want to answer one question with respect to the vacuums. The good news is the actual point of vacuum doesn't really make the noise. It's the engines that, that drive the vacuums and those are located on the top right there. So those are far away from the community and we did that on purpose. So, but the actual point of vacuum isn't really where the, the, the activity comes from. It comes from the engines and those are as far away as possible.
No, perfect. Thank you.
Councilmember Diaz.
Hi, it's for the applicant. If you could just reiterate, what, did, did I hear you say it's a 24-hour?
No.
Okay, good. What are your hours of operation?
Like I said, I did not, I promise you, I didn't compare notes with the other application. We're the same, about 7:00 AM to about 9:00 PM. You know, as daylight savings changes, that may change a bit by demand, but that's general, 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
And those vacuums, once you're shut down, those are shut down as well?
100%. You know, the older generation, you could go at 3:00 in the morning and it, it doesn't work that way. The, the facility only operates during operating hours.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, this one is not asking for the car detailing. So will only be the vacuuming. And again, the hours are in the condition of approval. So if they change those for any reason or go beyond it, it's a violation of the condition of approval. And no outdoor speakers. So they're not allowed to do any of that on either one, just so you know. Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions from the council? All right. Thank you so much. All right. At this point in time, I'd like to open a public hearing for... Where am I? All right. Public hearing for Resolution 2022-35. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the resolution, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition of the resolution, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed.
Make a resol-, uh, motion to approve Resolution 2022-35?
Second.
All right. I have a motion made by Deputy Mayor Tharp, second by Councilmember Busque. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. That motion carries four, zero. All right. Moving on to Resolution 2022-40. If I can have our city clerk, please read the resolution by title.
Resolution 2022-40, approving a site and development plan to allow for a standalone car wash in a commercial intensive zoning district located at 6,200 Lake Worth Road as requested by the petitioner, Dwayne Dickerson, agent for the contract purchaser, Vibe Investments LLC, providing for repeal of conflicting resolutions and providing for an effective date.
And once again, we have zoning administrator Karen Garner Young presenting.
We, this was a, a combination from the last one. So we've already made the presentation unless there's something else that we can answer or provide. I'm happy to do so.
Excellent. Are there any other comments or questions from the council?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 2022-40. Second.
All right. A motion made by Councilmember Busque, second by Deputy Mayor Tharp. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. That motion, if I can ask everybody to, to speak into the mic because I can't hear everybody, but I believe that was four, zero. Any, any opposed? Nope. All right. That motion carries four, zero. All right. Moving on to public hearing for Ordnance 2022-39. First reading, if I can have our city clerk, please read the ordinance by title.
Ordnance 2022-39, first reading amended the future land use map of the future land use settlement of the city's comprehensive plan to change the future land use designation of one parcel of land totaling approximately 20.1183 acres located at the southeast corner of Lake Worth Road and Jog Road at 6,400 and 6,490 Lake Worth Road and 4180 South Jog Road, suites one through nine from a Palm Beach County designation, commercial high to a City of Green Acres designation of commercial as requested by the planning GIS and engineering division, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, providing for transmission to the Division of Community Development, providing for inclusion in comprehensive plan and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. And once again, we have zoning administrator Karen Garner Young presenting.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. If it's with your permission, I'd like to do this jointly. Again, it's one of those petitions that it's a land use amendment and a zoning change in the same parcel. So I'll do the same presentation, but you would have to read the two titles in separately since they're two different type of actions to be taken. So I'm sure this is a long time coming. That's usually what we hear when I bring up Lake Worth Plaza West. So this is actually short time since the annexation. So again, this is Lake Worth Plaza West. This is the property site. It's located on the southeast corner of Lake Worth Road and Jog Road. As you know, we recently annexed the property in from Palm Beach County. This is just the base portion. It's not the out parcels. The out parcels, we had to do through a different process. We didn't want to wait. We felt it was appropriate to bring it in so that way we could start to create the relationship with the tenants who are presently there, making sure that they're in compliance with the city's land use and zoning code, because until this happens, they're under Palm Beach County. So the first one is we need a land use amendment. It is a city request. We need to change from Palm Beach County commercial high. Unlike us, we only have one commercial designation when it comes to land use. Your commercial or your residential. So, uh, but in Palm Beach County, they have multiple levels. So we're asking to change from Palm Beach County high to city commercial. And again, the reason is we need to do it to, due to the recent annexation. So this is what it would look like. This is our proposed land use map. As you can see, the site is the pink. Pink is commercial. To the south is PI, which is the post office. Okay? So that's why it's public. And then, um, of course, CM, commercial on the top. We have RSHD and RSMD. Part of that is the apartment complexes. Again, taking a look at it, it is appropriate. It already had a commercial designation. We're keeping it as a commercial designation. It doesn't make it any less or any more intensive, particularly on the land use, because this is the only designation that, that we particularly have. Staff took a look at the items in regards to three items, compatibility, concurrency and consistency. So compatibility, already showed you the map that the area really is predominantly commercial along that entire parcel. Again, it affronts Jog Road and it affronts Lake Worth Road. We feel that it does have the concurrency. It already had the services that were being provided when it was in the Palm Beach County. The only change is that, you know, we'd be providing typically the fire and the police. So the police, we go from one district to the other district, right? Because we have the sheriff's office already. The fire department, as you well know, is under an agreement. So over time, it will eventually convert over to Green Acres Fire Department. But again, we feel that the services are concurrent. We feel it is consistent with our comprehensive plan. Again, we talked about the nodes. We talk about Lake Worth Road is meant to be commercial in nature. It's all outlined in the staff report and indicating that we do feel that it determined that it does meet the criteria for the approval of a land use amendment. So the second one is the zoning change. So once we change it to a city land use, we now need to change it to a zoning land use. They have, it's presently has Palm Beach County commercial general. So the thought would be, well, why wouldn't it be the city commercial general? Well, Palm Beach County doesn't align directly with what ours is. Actually, the Palm Beach County commercial general aligns with our commercial intensive. So that's why we're recommending commercial intensive. But again, that really is in compliance with our comprehensive plan. That indicates on Lake Worth Road, we would typically have commercial intensive. The need for the zoning change, of course, is due to the recent annexation that came in. Here again, is to give you what the zoning looks like. So the pink is your CI. The red is your commercial general. And then you have the GU, the post office. And then behind is your higher level type residential. So it's typically not single-family. This would be the type of usage you would typically have when you kind of step down as you go through, uh, from a commercial nature down to the next potential residential level. We did take a look at the different items. You have to look whether the change would be contrary to our land use, the land use pattern. We talked about all these in the zoning. We went through each one of these. We feel that it is consistent in regards to the zoning change. Nothing there really brought a, a concern to staff. And I think part of the reason again is that it was already commercial. We're not recommending any changes per se than what was already there. And if we were able to provide the services and provide everything then, it only makes sense due to the annexation that they need the city's designation. Staff has determined that the petition does meet the criteria for the approval of a zoning change. Development Review Committee met on November 17th, 2022. We had no objections to what was being perceived. I did provide all the information to the property owner. He is aware. He has no objections to what's being presented. As a matter of fact, his response was, wow, you're moving really fast on this. So I said, well, we try our best. And Planning and Zoning Board of Adjustments did meet on December 8th and unanimously recommended approval for zero of both petitions as presented by staff. We are recommending approval of the small scale. This is a small scale, even though it's 20 acres. Small-scale land use amendment, CPA 2202 through ordinance 2022-39 and zoning change CZ 2202 through ordinance 2022-40. This is first reading, so it is not final. We have to come back to you on adoption. We ask that everything in our file be included as part of the public record. And staff is here to answer any questions or comments you may have.
Are there any comments or questions from the council? All right. Seeing none, like to open public hearing for ordinance 2022-39. First reading, anyone wishing to speak in, in favor of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, anybody wishing to speak in opposition of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed.
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2022-39.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm first reading.
All right. A motion made by Councilmember Diaz, second by Councilmember Busque. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. That motion carries four, zero. All right. Moving on to ordinance 2022-40, first reading. If I can have our city clerk, please read the ordinance by title.
Ordnance 2022-40, first reading, approving a zoning change for one parcel of land totaling approximately 20.1183 acres located at the southeast corner of Lake Worth Road and Jog Road at 6,400 and 6,490 Lake Worth Road and 4180 Jog Road, suites one through nine from a Palm Beach County zoning designation of general commercial to a City of Green Acres zoning designation of commercial intensive as requested by the planning GIS and engineering division, providing for changes to the official zoning map, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. And we just had our zoning administrator Karen Garner Young present. Are there any comments or questions from the council? All right, seeing none, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-two dash forty, first reading.
Second.
All right, a motion made by Deputy Mayor Tharp, second by Councilmember Busque, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries four zero. All right, we are now moving on to public hearing for ordinance twenty twenty-two dash thirty-eight, second reading, if I can have our city clerk please read the ordinance by title?
Ordinance twenty twenty-two dash three eight, second reading, amending chapter six franchises article five solid waste, division one, generating section six dash two seven six of the City of Green Acres Code of Ordinances to clarify that all rates under the franchise agreement may be amended by city resolution providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, severability, codification, retrospective application and an effective date.
Thank you, and we have Director of Purchasing Monica Power representing.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council, this is the second reading for ordinance twenty twenty-two dash thirty-eight. As we stated last time, the purpose is to clarify that all rates under the solid waste franchise agreement must be made through city resolution. City Council heard this item on December fifth and unanimously approved this item with no changes. Staff is recommending adoption of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash thirty-eight.
Thank you, are there any comments or questions from the council?
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-two dash thirty-eight on second reading.
Second.
Public.
Oh, sorry.
I, I, it was my fault. Um, like to open public hearing for ordinance twenty twenty-two dash thirty-eight, anyone wishing to speak in favor of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, anyone, anyone wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, public hearing is now closed, I have a have a motion made by Councilmember Diaz, second by Councilmember Dugo, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries four zero. All right, moving on to public hearing for ordinance twenty twenty-two dash forty-two, second reading, if I can have our city clerk please de- read the ordinance by title?
Ordinance twenty twenty-two dash four two, second reading, amending chapter two administration article one in general by adding a new section two dash two naming of city programs, events and facilities, providing for severability, conflicts, codification and an effective date.
All right, um, we have our city manager Andrew McQ presenting.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Uh, the council had discussed and was interested in having a policy and or procedure in place to assist in determining how programs, events and facilities, including property are named. The city attorney prepared an ord- an ordinance creating a new section in the city's code of ordinances which established a uniform method and procedure for the naming of city programs, events and facilities. The naming authority is solely vested in the city council, and through the adoption of the ordinance, a process will be established for naming of our programs, events and or facilities. Based on direction that was received at the last council meeting, uh, the ordinance has been updated to reflect that four votes will be required for the naming and or removing or renaming of any programs, events and or facilities. Staff is recommending approval of ordinance two zero two two dash four two on second reading.
There any comments or questions from the council?
Like to make a motion to approve.
Yeah, this is a public hearing.
Um, twenty twenty-two dash forty-two on the second reading.
Second.
There's a public hearing.
All right, this, this is a public hearing, so are there any other comments or questions from the council? Seeing none, uh, like to open public hearing for ordinance twenty twenty-two dash forty-two, second reading, anyone wishing to speak in favor of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Public hearing is now closed, have a motion made by Councilmember Busque, second by
Dugo.
Councilmember Dugo, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries four zero. All right, moving on to ordinance twenty twenty-two dash forty-one, first reading, if I can have our city clerk please read the ordinance by title?
Ordinance twenty twenty-two dash four one, first reading, approving the convenience of six thousand eight hundred four square feet strip of land located adjacent to and east of the property at one one oh five South Jog Road, Green Acres, Florida, authorizing city manager to execute all documents necessary to accomplish the convenience, providing for severability, conflicts and an effective date.
All right, and we have our zoning administrator Karen Garner Young presenting.
I promise this is the last one. Good evening, thank you, Mayor, City Council. This is actually a request to purchase city property. I want you to note that it is, uh, requires two readings, so it's not final tonight. But, um, I wanted to bring forward to you, the applicant is here to answer any questions that you may have. But if you see on the map, I wanted to give you an idea where it's located. Um, the parcel actually is the parcel, and I'm going to show you the next slide, that's a little sliver that's right next to Jog Road. So it's, this is actually what the purchased property is, but the applicant actually has property behind there. And the, uh, reason for the request was because they felt that they could create a better product, um, if they were able to take the additional property that was located in the front. So again, this just kind of gives you the idea of kind of what it looks like, the, the gray on the top here, this is Jog Road. Um, and, uh, the applicant's request is for the city to sell six thousand eight hundred and four square feet of land, which is fronting Jog Road. We did a complete search to make sure that the city does own the property, we believe we do. Uh, the applicant approached the city on the sale so that it can be added to a proposed planned development, there's no application in my hand, so I can't tell you what it is. Um, but the offer is for seventeen thousand five hundred dollars, including all closing costs, which is title and taxes. The applicant actually already paid for an appraisal, so, um, the costs have been particularly incurred by the applicant. The process itself requires two readings of an ordinance, so that is why this is first reading tonight. If you approve it after second reading, what you're allowing is the city council will authorize the city manager to execute any documents on behalf of the city. But you're approving the purchase, you're approving the purchase price. Now, staff is recommending approval based upon the fact that the own, the adjacent owner is really the only person who could buy the property. It really doesn't have any developmental right or value, so city staff does believe the selling of the property is in the best interest of the public health, safety and welfare of the city. We are here to answer any questions or comments that you may have.
Any comments or questions from the council, uh, Deputy Mayor Tharp?
I, I agree, I mean, i- it's, it's a small, small piece of, of property. I- is there any need for us to do an appraisal? I mean, again, I, I don't see anybody else ever wanting to buy that, but I want to make sure that we're just getting fair value.
We, we already did the appraisal, that was before it even came in, because we didn't even know what price would be appropriate. I think that's really in the public interest, you generally do that as an independent person comes in with knowledge of the real estate area. Gives you some idea, in this case, it is different than what the appraisal was, again, the thought here is, I think they expanded it more than probably what it should have been. It really, like you said, basically, it's a strip of land, there's no other purpose you could use it for. And so we felt it had, it could add value to the proposed prop- uh, plan development that could be coming in.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So what did the appraisal come in at?
I think it came in at a hundred and fifteen, I think is what it came in, thousand, a hundred and fifteen thousand. So it is substantially more than the seventeen five being, being asked for by the applicant. We did raise it, look, I'm, you know, we didn't take the initial request that came in. But when we really took a look at it and looked at what the appraiser was doing, and I think if you understand how they do their work, they look at the highest and best possible use of it, and when you really look at it from a practical sense, there really is no use for it. I mean, if, who else would want to purchase it from the city? You, you, it's not big enough to develop anything, it, you can't put anything on it. We, uh, the county gave it up, so the county doesn't need it for any right of way or anything that they may want on Jog Road. So our feeling was, you know, if it made a better project and, um, you know, really didn't have an impact on the city, we felt we would recommend that it should be, um, considered for selling.
And Mayor, I can address that as well. Um, when you look at the appraisal report that they did, what the appraiser did, because it, there's not really comparative properties that the appraiser could use. So the appraiser looked at the total value of the adjacent property or the buyer's property and did like a prorata assessment of how much this parcel would cost if it was already included in the overall size of the buyer's current property. And that's how they reached this hundred thousand dollar plus amount. But realistically looking at it, the city doesn't have other viable buyers for this property because the really only use for it is to be part of the overall property. We thought that the buyer's offer that we negotiated to seventeen five was probably the most the city will get for the property, including all closing costs. Um, the city received this property for free from Palm Beach County because it was unnecessary right of way that the county had.
Thank you, are there any other comments or questions from the council? All right. Does anybody want to make a motion?
Motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-two dash forty-one on first reading.
Second.
All right, have a motion made by, uh, Deputy Mayor Tharp, second by Councilmember Dugo, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, I counted three, anybody opposed?
I'm sorry.
All right. All right, that motion carries four zero. You okay, Councilmember Busque? Want to take a break?
No.
Okay. All right, moving on to ordinance twenty twenty-two dash forty-three, first reading, if I can have our city clerk please call, uh, please read the, the ordinance by title?
Ordinance twenty twenty-two dash four three, first reading, amending the City of Green Acres budget for the fiscal year beginning October one, twenty twenty-two and ending September thirty of twenty twenty-three, inclusive providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
All right, and we have our Director of Finance, Terry Berger presenting.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Terry Lee Berger, Finance Director. Council Policy Number Six requires that the City Council Act authorizes budget adjustments between cost centers, um, departments and funds. We have three projects in our three oh six fund that needs a budget adjustment, they need addition, well, additional funding. And when I say additional funding, maybe we can pull it from the fund balance to pay for this. Uh, but we do need a, uh, authorized budget adjustment. And the three projects are the sidewalk project and the septic to sewer project. These two have the same vendor and the cost has exceeded, has increased on these two projects. The sidewalk project has increased by thirty-three thousand. When I say that, we have some savings in some of the other lines in that project that, uh, we only need approximately thirty-three thousand to finish that one. And then the septic to sewer has increased, we need about a hundred and five thousand on that one. The third project is one of our own, when we now have to do, when you do a project on one of our own projects, we have to issue ourselves a permit. And so it is an expense to that project. And when we did our Dilman project, we did not budget for that expense. So that was a twelve thousand four hundred and two dollar expense. So the total budget adjustment for all three of these projects would be a hundred and fifty thousand four hundred and two dollars. Staff recommends, uh, approval of ordinance twenty twenty-two forty-three on first reading. Any questions?
Yes, the, the permitting one, who are we paying?
Who are we paying, we're paying ourselves. We're paying ourselves, yes.
Excellent, okay.
Yeah, but because it is, uh, an expense, it doesn't need so much.
Accounting, okay, got it. Is there any comments or questions from the council? Uh, my question on the, the, the septic to sewer, what, what has increased, what's?
It's mainly the cost of concrete.
Concrete?
Yeah.
Okay. I see no, no questions.
Motion.
Uh, motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-two forty-three.
Second.
All right, I have a motion made by Councilmember Dugo, second by Councilmember Busque, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries four zero. All right, moving on to resolution twenty twenty-two dash sixty-two, if I can have our city clerk please read the, um, resolution by title?
Resolution twenty twenty-two dash six two, agreement between the City of Green Acres and Painted INC. To create public art on a wall on the northeast corner of Malaluka Lane and Haverhill Road authorizing the appropriate city officials to execute the agreement, providing for an effective date.
All right, I've been waiting for this one. Uh, Director of Purchasing Monica Power presenting.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Tonight I'm presenting resolution twenty twenty-two dash sixty-two, award of the agreement between the city and Painted INC. To create public art on the wall located on the corner of Malaluka Lane and Haverhill Road. The wall is approximately five hundred and six feet in length and four feet tall, the city put out an RFP and went through the entire selection process. And this is the artist that we selected, it's her, her, her name is, she goes by Nico. She was our highest ranked artist. She's represented by Painted INC. Nico is a Florida-based visual artist and a muralist, she grew up in Palm Beach County attending Bach Middle School of the Arts and Dreyfus High School of the Arts. She later moved to Jacksonville to study at the University of North Florida. And there's a little bit more bio here on her, um, but here are just a few of her murals from her portfolio. I wanted to present these to you just so that you can see what her experience and capabilities are. And now for the fun part. The following is a conceptual mock-up piece of what the artist is proposing for our area. There may still be some changes to this concept, animals, flowers, colors. But this is the general idea of what she is thinking for this area. Staff desires to approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash sixty-two and award RFP for public art. If you have any questions, I'm prepared to answer them.
Oh, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash sixty-two. Thank you, Mrs. Power.
Thank you, this has been-
This artwork is beautiful.
It has been such a fun project to work on.
I will second, and are we going to see concepts at some point, or is this the concept? I, 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 I love the colors.
You do love the colors?
It's bright, it's vibrant, um, it's going to add a little bit of splash on that corner, it's going, I think it's going to be fantastic.
All right, so I have a motion made by Councilmember Busque, second by Deputy Mayor Tharp, are there any other comments or questions from the council? My only comment is the snake, I'm not a fan of the snake.
Neither is Andrea.
Neither was I, 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 I didn't love the snake either.
If we can get some other animals, uh, turtle, I, I'm a big fan of turtle.
Proposed a turtle.
We need like a loggerhead or something, I don't know, something that's native to Florida.
We got the squirrel.
We got the squirrel. We got the gator.
I was going to say the alligator freaked me out, but.
Yeah. But if, if we can get the snake and get some, like a turtle or something, that would be really nice. That's my-
That being said, I think it's going to be beautiful, whatever, it's going to be better than a, a bare concrete wall.
Yes, if, if you stop and you look at her previous art, her murals, I mean, so impressed, very, very impressed with her, I think it's going to be great.
Sorry, any other comments?
Estimated start or time, start date or completion date?
As soon as possible, since we're technically in the dry season.
No, no, I, two thumbs up, all four.
All right, so I have a motion made by Councilmember Busque, second by Deputy Mayor Tharp, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that motion carries four zero. All right, moving to our next item, ratification of the Building Board of Adjustments and Appeal Board. Uh, we are appointing one of nine members to serve four-year unlimited starter terms. Uh, we have a presentation by City Manager Andrew McQ.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Uh, as you stated, Mayor, six, uh, members have already been appointed, this is just adding one additional member to complete the regular members. There will still be two alternate vacancies. That one member is a general contractor and also in real estate, his name is Brandon Cabrera. Staff is recommending ratification of the Building Board of Adjustment and Appeals appointment.
Any comments or questions from the council? Do I have a motion?
No.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a motion made by Councilmember Dugo, second by Deputy Mayor Tharp, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries four zero. Um, moving on to discussion items, there are none tonight, comments from the public on, excuse me, on non-agenda items, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Olga Sierra from, um, fifty-seven ninety-four South Thirty-Eighth Street, Greenacre, Florida, three three four six three. Okay, I just want to bring, uh, two concerns that I have. The first one is, if it's possible, the Public Works Department clean the sewers, vents, because all the leaves from our trees in the front of our house ended out there, and when it rains, it flows the streets. The perfect example is Thirty-Seventh Court. I was coming the other night from work, I always use- I was coming the other night from work, I always, usually took 37 to get to 38th Street, that's my street, and it was flooded. Why? Because the sewer drains are topped with the leaves. That's one of my concern. The second concern is the big holes that we have in the corners, that because they make, they, they fix the sidewalks, and in the end of the sidewalks in the corners, there are huge holes. What they do is they put just dirt on it, and when the cars make the turn in the, you know, in the streets, they make the hole bigger. So that's my main concern, to see instead of putting dirt, why you don't put cement in there. That's my other two, my two concern that I have, and the, the potholes are in the 37 Court when you enter.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Can we dig notes of that?
Yep.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, seeing none. Moving on to our city manager's report, uh, City Manager McHugh.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, only a couple of things tonight. For January, our meetings are scheduled to be the 2nd of January, the 16th of January. January 2nd is the city's observed holiday for New Year. January 16th is Martin Luther King Day, so staff is proposing, would we be able to have a meeting, one meeting in January on the 9th of January?
Uh, I'll start with consensus from my left, Councilmember Busque.
It's my birthday, do we really have to do?
Birthday, hats.
That's fine, I shouldn't have said anything.
Did you see what happened to City Manager McHugh?
Yeah, I just realized that, I'm going to suffer the consequences.
You sure? You still want to have the meeting December, uh, January 9th?
Oh, no, do I have a choice?
Well, we can get consensus, is there another possible date?
No, that's fine.
Any other dates that we?
Um, that was the date that we looked at, I mean, we could look at other dates, but that was really the only date that we looked at that was kind of in the middle of the month. If the council would like to look at other dates, we can look at other dates.
I'm fine with the 9th, I think we just have to see what happens. I'll be out of town.
Well, seems like attendance is optional, not as anyways. Councilmember Diaz. Uh, Councilmember Dugo.
Yes.
I'll be available.
I am available.
All right, we'll celebrate your birthday together.
29th birthday, I believe.
All right, wonderful. The only other thing I had was just, and I'm sure everyone's aware, but I just wanted one last time to wish our Captain Moore well as he attends the FBI Academy, leaving in January, will be gone for three months, I know we'll be in good hands with Lieutenant Foreman, but we do wish you well, and, and we hope it's a wonderful experience for you, so, and with that, you know, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, happy holidays to everyone.
Thank you, and our city attorney's report?
Uh, no report tonight, but happy holidays as well to everybody.
Thank you. Uh, the mayor's and city council's reports start to my right, Council, Deputy Mayor Tharp.
I was honored to, to join some staff members, fire rescue, over to Estero on the West Coast on the 8th to deliver some toys. We filled, um, our, one of our trailers, um, who was our driver, was it?
Ken Gibson.
Ken was our driver, did amazing, we won't talk about Chief Fuller's driving, but that's okay. So, you know, extra thank you again to staff, PBSO, I know they stepped up with the donation, fire rescue, Austin back there, Suzanne, Skidmore, all did an amazing job, so thank you from the bottom of my hearts, um, and happy holidays to everyone.
Councilmember Dugo.
Um, I would just like maybe to consider, get a consensus even if not now, or at the next meeting, do we still want the acrylic dividers up? I, I'm wondering if it's maybe time for us, if you're comfortable enough, I would like them removed, just feel like it's, it's, uh, it's probably okay.
I mean, at this point, oh, Councilmember Noble does wear a mask, right?
Sometimes.
Well.
I, I mean, I think that's some, that's, let's put her on the next, on the discussion item for the next meeting, I think that's the right thing to do. Anything else, Councilmember Dugo?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Diaz.
I, I just want to thank Ms. Thompson and all of the department directors that were a part of Elsie Swain's Mock City Council Meeting last week, it was a lot of fun, and we all learned a lot. And really, other than that, just happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, happy holidays, and Happy New Year to everyone.
Thank you, Councilmember Busque.
I will say, I know you put it on a discussion item for next meeting, but I'm adamantly against taking these down, because there's a resurgence of, of everything right now. The hospitals are full, I, I don't feel safe without them. And I just, besides that, I'd like to wish everybody a happy holiday, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Hanukkah.
Excellent, and for the mayor's report, I, I got three items, um, piggybacking on what Councilmember Diaz said, kudos to our staff on the, the Mock City Council here in, in our, in our chambers, Michelle, you and your team did a wonderful job, and, and City Manager McHugh, you and your staff, having all the departments be part and, and actually present, uh, it wasn't just a mock, it felt like it was a, an actual council meeting, so, uh, good job on that, I, I always enjoy that. We also had the, myself and, and Councilmember Diaz had the opportunity to go to Green Acres Elementary last, Friday, last Thursday, last, it was last week, and we had Government's Day, and with them, we also had two school board members and, um, a judge who, who talked to the, to the kids, they came up with their own questions that we were able to answer, but it, it's, it's great to be able to, to talk to them and, and show them what the importance of getting involved, um, in local government and what it means. I, I know sometimes things, uh, get, get over them a little bit because they don't fully understand, I, I think we, we did a good job of, you know, talking about smaller issues that they see, uh, on, on their daily drive to school and, and things like that, so I thought, I thought that was really neat. And then the last item, I just want to let you know, I was, um, reappointed to the Executive Board at the, at the TPA, I think we've done tremendous job there, uh, continue to give Green Acres, uh, an, an outlet and a, and a place that we can, you know, let, let our voice be heard, and the TPA is, is a great, uh, place to do so. We have some major thoroughfares that run through the City of Green Acres, so having a voice, uh, not only at the board, but also at the executive board, I think is always important. That concludes my report, and, uh, the meeting's adjourned.